...Ollie Donald and City Attorney Emily Walker.
Thank you very much. I'm 333.
The first item on the agenda is council discussion of a change order to allow management assist advisory group international lag to conduct an organization and staffing analysis for the city in amount of seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Please take a break.
Yeah, uh, we have to make a concept. Uh, we have a certain amount of time. Is the rest of time to call management advisor group. We need to do a presentation in person.
Uh, good evening. Uh, I did prepare a formal presentation. I just wanted to share some information and make sure that everyone understands exactly what we're proposing in phase two of our work. I would say as part of the conference. Uh, each department comes with probably all the department heads look at the organizational structure, look at staffing, and it became clear as we went through the different departments that there are a number of issues organizationally that need some expertise with respect to, for example, staff as a city that's building up capacity with limited resources, you really need to begin to prioritize how we build up departments, how we transition outsourced services back in-house, those things need to be looked at, also accurate numbers projecting what the staffing needs to grow to over the next couple of years in department. And having worked in municipal and county government around the country, particularly in the state of Georgia, some of the functions within some of the departments are not traditionally what you find in municipal government to ensure efficient, effective service delivery. And so I think there are a number of cases, well, I know that there are a number of cases where there needs to be a realignment of some functional areas within the city to make sure that service delivery is optimized. And I can give you a great example. The bread and butter of local government is development, and I've attended several meetings here and I've heard you guys talk about how you want to encourage development, you want to bring in developers. But one of the things that developers want is they don't want a cumbersome bureaucracy when they're coming in to build and renovate buildings within the city. They want a streamlined process where they can determine, plan review, and all those things done. The concept that most of our projections have gone is a one-stop shop where the processes are put in place, location logistics, so that a developer can come into a central location and everything here she needs is at her disposal to quickly and effectively go through that process of getting permit to develop a subdivision or some type of retail operation. Right now, the way you set up, you're not set up for a one-stop shop. And there are some things that need to be done to get that process moving forward, and we can help you with that. Our team consists of former city managers, finance officers, police chiefs, fire chiefs, planning people. We can help shorten that line of inquiry and move the city further along to where you're better positioned to provide better services. There are some other areas that I won't get into, you know, in this forum in this context, but there are ample opportunities to improve the way the city functions and operates. There are some communication issues that need to be addressed. There are some resource allocation issues. There's some technology issues that need to be addressed. So there are a host of things that need to be addressed, and this is not a slight on anyone. The city does have some younger, in terms of experience, staff running some major departments. It would be a tremendous benefit to department heads like that to be able to have access to information and resources from individuals who have worked in similar, larger, smaller, more diverse, more complex organizations to help them be able to better manage and lead their respective departments. There are a number of departments where policies and procedures are outdated. A lot of the stuff that you started out with, rightly so, because time was an issue, came from full mechanical. Well, some of that stuff wasn't a best practices model, for example. And one of the things we'll do is help make sure that policies and procedures do reflect best practices in the different industries and areas with the respective departments. And so somebody said to me today, are you going to come in and create organizational charts? If I was going to charge you seventy-eight thousand dollars to build organizational charts, you ought to throw me in fully camp in jail. It's much more complex than that. It's looking at the organization currently from an organizational staffing standpoint, identifying weaknesses, what it takes in terms of a roadmap to address those weaknesses. And sure, we'll look at organizational charts and we'll map those things out, but we're more concerned about processes and procedures.
Before I call on someone, I'd like to ask a question. Uh, Mr. Brown, or Mr. Malazi, you know, this thing has changed, carries the two worst words in government has changed. Uh, so I'm listening, I'm trying to figure out, so I need to make you understand whether the change come in, is it additional services or what is the case?
Change order.
So it means that if we had the contract with them to do the job that you are going to ask today, we do the compensation analysis, and during the process of doing that, that's where these other issues came about. So it will not be complete without re-aligning the best end people that you are adjusting their studies, you're adjusting their compensation. And during the presentation last time, we mentioned, say, there is the phase two. So change order is just a continuation of what is already in existence, but because of the fee, you have to have each change order, a new contract that's based on the existing contract.
I don't, let me ask, let me ask you another question. What is the percentage of change order based on coming?
I don't know.
What percent of the contract of the change order?
Uh, so, well, the original contract was thirty, thirty-eight thousand. This change order is second rate, so approximately double?
Uh, Mr. Malazi, can I give that to you?
I believe it was twenty thousand. Twenty thousand.
That's double.
Twenty, it said, oh, yeah. You basically went right to that.
Okay, okay, let me ask you a question. Do we have a minimal limit for change orders before it comes before the board? Some government say any change order over ten percent was coming before the council. In my seventeen years, I've never seen a change order this big. Uh, so, do we have anything, uh, let me ask the attorney, do we have anything that talks about the percentage of change order before it comes before the board?
Nothing that I'm aware of.
Sure.
Um, I've not run across anything, but I don't want to say definitively you don't, but I've not come across.
But you will tomorrow.
Okay.
You will tomorrow. I'm just, I heard a lot, and I guess, but I turned over this gun, but I heard a lot, but I wasn't, it wasn't focusing in on these two words, which is change order. And so, uh, that bothered me. Let me go to Ms. Guns, and then, uh, everybody, Mr. Clea had his hand up. Everybody, is everybody in the queue?
It's not working.
It's not working.
It's not working, okay. And then Ms. Gilliard.
So I have to agree with Mayor Edwards when I saw change order, kind of threw me for a loop a little bit. So the seventy-eight thousand is in addition to what, um, I guess we have already paid this organization, correct?
That's very true. The main reason why it's coming from the council is the amount. Remember, twenty-five thousand is what the city manager got approved. Beyond twenty-five thousand for any contract, it has to come before the council.
So, uh, for the scope of work that Mr. Campbell is doing, for the preliminary study, have we even looked at additional quotes instead of just adding on to the change order of seventy-eight thousand? Have we did any type of comparison of what his type of scope of work would be? Because I read somewhere that you all necessarily didn't do that, but...
No, we didn't, we didn't go back out for quote, in this, in this scenario, because the original, the original contract was for the compensation study. In perform of the compensation study, uh, this, this issue was recognized that there's some misalignment with regards to where some of the staff sit and in some of the service offerings. Because it's the same vendor and it's within the scope of what was originally ordered, but it wasn't necessarily contemplated in the beginning, I thought that change order was appropriate.
So it was an initial scope of work?
Well, the initial scope of work was for the compensation study. In perform of the compensation study, this issue was uncovered, and because it's the same vendors within his realm of expertise, and it wasn't outlined in the original contract, so a change order was appropriate to include.
So for me, what I'm thinking, if that's a whole nother contract.
It could have been another contract.
So, it could have been a whole nother contract, and I, and I kind of get what you're saying, but, um, the comparable quotes and looking at something different, I mean, I think it's only fair, but also too, when is, what is the scope of work that he is doing, and when will, what's the delivery date on that project?
Uh, it's included, it's included in the material to council.
So I just have the change order form. I think I looked at that.
Uh, the scope of work was attached, it's, I believe, a seven, eight, I believe.
The letter.
Yes, the letter is the, pretty much a cover, it's the scope of work. Behind the letter, it gets into the actual scope.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Okay, Mr. Clea?
Um, well, first question is, so that this is a forty, this is forty thousand new dollars?
Seventy-eight thousand.
New dollars, seventy-eight thousand, where are the seventy-eight thousand dollars at?
This contract just says it's a non-service.
Oh, so I mean, it's, it's in the budget for it?
Yes, yes.
Um, then my other question is, you outlined a, a number of issues. I'm not sure that we don't know that those exist, or if it's just that we don't have the capacity to address this. So is this seventy-eight thousand dollars, are you actually going to do all of the work, or are you just going to make the recommendations and say, here are things that you all need to do?
We're going to do the work.
Okay.
We identify the issue and then make recommendations on how to correct the issue. Uh, I'm sure you do recognize some of the issues that I've raised, but the bigger question is, what do you do about it? And when you decide to take action, is it the appropriate action, and what do you base that action on?
So, yeah, I just want to make sure that you were actually, the seventy-eight thousand dollars actually covered you the work, because I think that, well, I know that our staff is overwhelmed, and so there are changes that there, everyone has ideas of things that they would like to do, but like, man, it's just not enough people to do. Um, I, something, uh, you, you really only talked about one specific issue, and now this economic development, and we talked about this one-stop-shop model. I feel that we are in a space right now, and you will see this later on tonight when we start talking about this moratorium, where we are, we are reintroducing ourselves to developers who have their own set of ideas about what they want to build in this, in this area. And inasmuch as we are going to make the process easy for developers, I want to make sure we make the process that easy for our residents, so that they can understand what's going on and that they can have a voice, because as difficult as it's been for developers to like get stuff done, it's been twice as difficult for residents to find out what is going on until after it's all been built. So, that's it.
Okay, Ms. Gilliard, and Ms. Guns?
Um, I hear you, and, um, I'm glad that, um, I'm glad that you bring a list before us, and this is mine, because we're a little bit two years down the road, and you're correct in that we didn't have to, for the necessity, bring over a lot of policies and procedures from the county. And so it is, I think, ample time as we're moving towards a strategic plan and stretching out for X number, whatever, years, that we're going to be strategically focused on certain things, to take a look at where we've been and where we are right now and where we need to go as it relates to, um, staffing and, um, and management and upgrades, I guess, if you will. And so I think that it is a good idea to do it. It's another sort of look objectively at ourselves, um, and you hit on something that I think is really important, and that is that there are definitely policies that we need to improve, create, or whatever, that we don't have, and we're sort of like moving along, you know, we're rushing along, and I think we need to stop and take a look at to see, so that's number one. Number two, we're not immune to change orders, because we have a lot, we have a lot of contracts and a lot of change orders. So, to, you know, to me, that, that's really not a big deal, but before we say conclusively that, um, that this is something that we really don't think that we need to do, I would like to see Mr. Malazi, a list of every contract that we have, what those contracts started out as, and how they were increased, and what they were increased for. And I know, I know we have a nice, long list, okay? I think that would help to make a decision objectively about whether or not we should move forward. Um, so, that's my two cents.
Okay, uh, Ms. Guns? Can I just, just one more comment? What do you ultimately vote to do or not in this spot? I, I guess I look at it from a standpoint, when I work with municipal county government, I want to go into the organization and give them as much value as I can when we do work. Yes, we came in to develop the compensation classification plan, but clearly, there are some things here that broke it, and I don't mean to offend anybody, but they are. And why wait three, four years down the road to try to fix it when you got a chance on the front end to get ahead of it and, and make it work better? I think you owe that to the people that live here. That's why they created this city.
Right, right.
Because they complained the county wasn't responsive, they weren't proactive. And so this is a tool to be proactive, and your budget is what, twenty-five million, thirty million francs, where is it?
Hundred.
Hundred million dollars, and we're talking about seventy-eight thousand dollars. I mean, it's not my money, but one of the things you find about me, I don't sugarcoat it. It is what it is. And so ultimately, whatever you decide to do is, is fine with me one way or the other. But I just think, whether it's us or somebody else, there are some stuff that's broken, and it's going to get worse, and you need to fix it. Ms. Brown?
Thank you.
Um, I agree with Mr. Russell. There is a lot of things that are broken, and I do, one thing I like about studies is an objective approach. Uh, it also includes precedence, it also includes, in some cases, a case law. Most organizations, most thriving organizations, they have what you call, uh, business analysts inside them that constantly look at policies and procedures and IT infrastructures, at least what I've been exposed to on a corporate level. And also, they have business analysts in the government level. And so we don't have any business analysts, uh, in our, uh, government structure. And so I would, uh, like for the contract to, uh, be given with, to continue with the person who's already done half of the work, uh, and who already has some familiarity with our structure based on a wage and classification study that was done. And I do want to see, uh, updated org charts that's reflected of policy recommendations that you were giving us, because that's all org charts are. They're a high-level representation of what the policy, um, says, and is a visual aid. And so, uh, for me, they are helpful, uh, along with the actual written policy and SOP recommendation. I, that's one of the problems that I have my intern working on. He's essentially doing, uh, research on organization structures, uh, with other cities, and that's what he's been doing the whole summer. And so I am glad to see that this company is being brought on to do this on a professional level. Uh, we, and based on the research that my intern has given me, we are totally out of whack, uh, with some of the things that we're doing.
Okay, Mr. Baker, is there another? Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Um, okay, I guess, I, I just have comments. I mean, I probably not related to you directly as a provider of service to us in the city, but I just want to share my comments with my colleagues. Um, we paid for service that we know we needed. We know we needed the service. Uh, he provided that service, um, and now we found out, after the service is done, it costs double of what we initially paid. Um, okay, let me just start over. It's like, we all have had vehicles. You go to the mechanic, fix something, and then they get under the hood, and then they say, okay, there's other things that's going on. Um, not to say that you're one of those mechanics, but I'm having, I paid for things that I didn't need so many times, because they saw my car and felt that I had the money to do it, and it felt like that's something that we should do. And I think that the only problem that I have with this is, we have people, not just him, who come before us as SMEs or subject matter experts, and they tell us these things that we need to do, and when they come before us, we say, yeah, thank you, they have a seat, and then we make our own decisions anyway. Like, what I would like to see is, when we came up with, uh, making a decision for this provider, what were the comps for everybody else who offered this service? Because it seems to me that if this was the person who beat everybody out, and now they have to go back to the drawing board, it's almost better to go back to the drawing board if we just decided that we wanted to do it anyway, with somebody else, because then we can have an objective opinion to bounce off of the work that he's already done.
Let me quote, let me just quote by saying, Mr. Russell, I have nothing personal, I think everybody said up here, I totally agree with it, but as a person who's been in the business of government for as long as I have, let me tell you what happened with change order, I let it go. And, uh, when people bid on stuff, they bid low. And then before you know it, there's change order, and there's change order, and there's change order. And a lot of time, uh, Mr. Clea, it gets back to where the old bid started in the first place. So nothing, I'm not trying to, I just get, when you say change order, this, my mind just goes crazy about that. Uh, so nothing personal against you, uh, but I want you to...
Ms. Baker?
Don't forget, I'll be there. Go right here and quote.
Okay, yeah, I'm just curious, because all of us, we just hear from the people that come for us, um, and everybody up in smoke, if we could let either Ms. Walker or Mr. Donald at least share their thoughts before we just completely close out?
If they'd like to.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Donald, Jack, say something about it.
Can I say something, Mr. Ronald, please? So, some of the things that he's talking about is what Mr. Donald has already suggested of making some changes. For example, will be, uh, Mr. Pike is responsible for, uh, business licenses, and of course, you'll find all business licenses in the office that is also doing economic development. Economic development's job is to attract businesses. Businesses, they come in, they need the permit, they will need the business licenses, and that one is changed, is going to find us, so that there's no conflict of economic development business coming in at the same time they are the ones that are looking for a business licenses. Then there's a change again from the manager's office for the, our open records manager that was maybe misplaced, is going to the Craig's office. So those are some of the things that are to be realigned, that Mr. Manager already studied, are doing that. So it's not something that is just from anywhere else, but it's seen realistically. How about you, sir?
Donald, Jack, say go.
So I wouldn't disagree, but I wouldn't necessarily agree with those sentiments. I do think, um, made a great point about the one-stop-shop. I think you guys are very familiar that we are attempting to transition towards a centralized model, and when we look at things like economic development, we want to have a one-stop-shop for our businesses. I think those are no-brainers, maybe you need to study, maybe you don't. But I do believe that, uh, when we look at our organizational structure and we look at just how we do business and deliver services, as a new city, it makes a lot of sense to, uh, you know, move forward in this direction. I do agree with you guys, though, that, and I don't think the seventy-eight thousand dollars is an, uh, inordinate cost, but I would, if asked, I would have probably recommended that we put it back on the street to have additional competition for a new activity. So I, I think they did a great job and, uh, came up with some excellent recommendations. I think the letter you received from me earlier today with the staff recommendation, uh, supports that. But I would also say that, you know, when you're taking on new endeavors, competition is always welcome, not only for cost, but to know the landscape of what you're receiving. With that being said, this is one of the more reputable companies that, uh, has done business with us, so, you know, it, it kind of comes down to your preference. I think mine is always to competitively bid when possible, uh, but again, you know, the work has been quality, so I would defer to the council on the recommendation.
Now, council, if you want to add anything?
Not really, I, I just think the pros and cons have been articu- articulately communicated, and I support, um, whatever direction or form of view you elect.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is council decision on resolution for moratorium banning uses.
Good evening, Mayor Council. The item before you is an item that is recommending to have a number of uses to be, um, I guess postponed is the language we're going to use, um, until June two thousand and twenty. Um, the reason behind that is because you've seen a number of moratoriums that have come your way, and we're asking for there to be a hold on the particular uses that you have had concerns with to allow for us to move forward with the, um, remaining uses that are not as much of a concern as you have identified in the past. So we're basically asking for you to give this consideration, and I will open up for any questions you may have, please.
Ms. Gilliard, can't get into the system? Um, I read it. Thank you, thank you, I read it, and, um, so the one big one that I have a problem with is farmer's market.
Okay.
So I don't know why that's in there. Particularly since, um, a lot of activities that is going on in my district is moving in that direction. So I don't understand that, and I think that needs to come out.
Okay, so, um, during your work session on, I believe it was last week, there was a separate item that had a list of uses that were, um, identified to have a desire for restrictions. Um, I was informed that we are to merge that list, um, that was from the previous list, and so that list, that item came from the other item, basically.
Well, I've talked to the, the council person who created that and made that request.
Okay.
Yes. Ms. Guns, are you good? Okay, Ms. Guns?
So, um, those were, that was one of my concerns, was the farmer's market, because we just actually opened up a farmer's market industry too. But also, um, the justification behind the cannabis dispensaries, what was that? I mean, is there any justification behind that?
That's what was a little so emerged.
Okay, so are you getting applications now for that?
We have not, let's see, well, we had an inquiry, but we haven't had any application that has come in, to my knowledge.
Okay, and, um, the next question is, how flexible is this moratorium since it's going all the way to June?
So the original intent, uh, when the application, well, let me rephrase that. When we contracted with the company to do our funding ordinance, um, by contract, they had it to the end of the year to... um by contract, they had to the end of the year to complete that document. Um so should they complete the document by the end of the year and it's up for review early year, um you find that there's no, it is necessary, once that file is ready for your adoption, then the moratorium can end. Because more than likely, a lot of these concerns, I'm going to have for that consultant to consider inside of that rewrite, to see what we are to do with these items.
And then also too, um dollar, dollar stores and all that stuff, is that considered discount retail?
Yes, that's considered discount retail.
Okay, alright, okay.
Ms. Rose, were you trying to?
Um I just want to be sure because I know we got a flood, we got a lot of these trying to come in, personal care services. And home and residents, that covers, I mean group, okay, I see it. That covers, okay, never mind, it covers the behavior.
Yeah, that's.
Any further comment? Yeah, I'm just, uh I'm sorry. Mine is different from up there. Uh so, go ahead.
Uh yeah, I just wanted to give a little uh, I don't know, history about what, what happened and the difference between my ordinance, which we had our first read on at a special meeting, and the moratorium which we had, which we have now. My ordinance was to limit like uses. So, I don't know, so so first of all, there's, we had a list of uh, Ms. Reed had a list of things and I had a list of things. The things that are, the things that are listed in the moratorium and in my ordinance are definitions that do not currently appear in our zoning ordinance. So there, there are things that were not contemplated when that zoning ordinance was written in the document. So that's, that's the first part, that's, that's where the definition is coming from. My ordinance limits like uses. It is not, it's not a ban. So whether it's a discount store or a farmers market, what my ordinance says, you just can't have ten of them on the same strip.
Right.
Um this moratorium is going to put a hold on my ordinance and say, we're going to consider Colleen's recommendations about like uses in the overall zoning rewrite. But while we're considering them, we're just going to stop all of these other things. So, so there are some, while I want to limit open air markets or farmers markets, it was never my intention to stop them. So I do think that when this comes up on the regular agenda, we just need to make an amendment to uh remove the farmers markets. Uh uh again, I don't know that there are any cannabis dispensaries that are coming now, but I do know that Georgia approved ten licenses. And I just want, you know, that is, that is definitely coming. At this point, more than half of the states in the country have either recreational or whatever. And so we've been going to these conferences and what they've actually told us is that it's not, the best place to handle this is not actually in the zoning code. It's actually in our business licensing, that it might be more effective to handle the species in terms of licensing the same way we do for alcohol or liquor storage and things like that. But while we're, while we're making that decision, what I, what I don't want to happen is that just like on O-National, there's ten liquor stores, I don't want to see ten cannabis dispensary. I don't, you know, I don't know how. So that's, that's why, um, that's why those things are there. The, the last thing I want to say is, is the, is to talk about the date. So, so I think that it's important for us to understand long-term how much time we are going to have to allot to go through this document once we get it. There, there are, you know, there, there are definitions, we're going to have to define what everything is. There are like twenty-something different zoning classifications that, that, that say how large a lot is to have a home on it or how many different things can go in a C-one or a C-two. There are things that we fight about it, we don't fight about it, we debate at these meetings. There's eight overlay districts. I don't think any of us are going to give up our overlay districts. So when we get that document, um there's also, this document also governs the appeals process and the code enforcement boards. How, how much notices developers have to give when they're building things. So I think that it's actually going to take either several work sessions or a two or three day retreat. It's going to take a lot to go through all of that. And, and for me, this, this June date gives us time so that what I don't want to see is we get this, we get this five hundred, six hundred page document and then our, our moratorium is ending and we gotta like read it and pass it in one morning. And everyone's like, oh, we just got this, right? So, so if we get through it before June, we can always lift the moratorium. But this gives us enough time to really do it the way that we should.
Okay, I just knocked a book off, but I think it's one of the next things, Gilliard and Dennis Guns.
So um I am okay with the cannabis dispensary being in here for now. I do understand, yes, Georgia did issue ten licenses. But um I, I do think that it's only fair for residents to have input on where they will want to see these dispensaries if anyone wants to put one in the city. So if, if we say appetite for dispensaries in the city, I would love to have resident input and give us a, and give us an opportunity as a council to address where we would want to see these dispensaries go in our cities. Because I would hate for somebody to decide to uh put one right in the middle of the residential community.
Okay, I'm not sure, I'm not following on this.
What I am saying is I am okay for the cannabis dispensary language being in this moratorium for right now until we figure out how we want to deal with the in zoning code.
You're speaking of the rewrite project?
Yes.
Okay, clear.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Uh let me ask you again, uh Ms. Guns, yeah, go ahead.
So um I, this is a resolution that you presented to us and it's during the work session. And so this means that this is not something, this is a resolution imposing a moratorium. So this is not anything that we're voting on, so.
It's on the consent agenda.
It's on the consent.
So we need to move.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Colleen, we need to move it off of there, thank you.
All right.
So just a few more, um thanks about the farmers market, but also what about extended uh hotel stays? Is that added in there or can we add that? The extended hotels, so like, what is that? Um, what's the name of the? Extended stay, you know, like hotel stays or, you know, those. So is that uh included?
That is not included yet.
So maybe if we could add extended stay hotels as one of the um things that we're gonna place a moratorium on. And what was the justification behind the tiny homes? Go hang on with that.
That was me, again, that's some, again, that's something that we hadn't, it's not in our, we haven't defined. So if someone wanted to build one now, I mean, our ordinance isn't clear about whether or not it can be.
Okay, just wanted to bring clear. I like that first name of ours.
All right. All right, Ms. Guns, you finished?
Yes, sir.
Here, go on, uh, thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is council discussion on resolution for adopt the road. Councilor McDonald, you're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Uh this resolution is presented to you for consideration to adopt the road. Uh primarily in Fulton County, we had a similar, similar resolution. And at this point, we have different uh roads that were adopted in the past, but under Fulton County for a solution. So the main purpose is to ensure that current residents are asking to adopt the road, follow the new guidelines that we've uh provided to you tonight. What is adopt the road? In, in essence, it's a little, little provision and beautification program responsible for, by uh public works. And it's subject by a four main test, who can adopt the road. Uh it can be done by civic organization, uh the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, churches, high schools, residents. What are the responsibilities of an adopting organization? Uh they can adapt on the stretch of a road, they can adapt the length, uh the entire road and so on. Uh what are the responsibilities of Public Works Department? We will provide uh support to those entities that want to adapt the road. We typically provide uh two road signs for a road that's being adapted. Uh we will furnish some supplies and small equipment. Uh we provide uh staff, some assistance on how to uh ma- maintain those roads. And we'll do uh coordination with the, with the media. How does an organization adapt? We have the guidelines and this resolution on how those organizations will, will have to follow. Uh there's certain things, we have tips, safety tips and reminders. Uh we have a release of liability that you have to execute. We got parental consent, release of liability for minors. We have rules and regulations, uh public works, department of responsibilities, adapting organizations, safety, identification and maintenance. And later on, we have uh full set of documents that they have to sign.
So um, so thank you, um we're really excited about this program because it took forever to get here. So um we just have a few questions, um how much will the signs cost?
The, the signs, it will depend, it depends, perhaps the small names that are coming are gonna be sponsoring. Are we gonna be sponsoring? So it's not gonna cost that much money, we will do that as we've done before and then, and then our maintenance.
Well, we have an opportunity to weigh in as far as the branding um and look and feel of the signs. I know you all would design them, but at least, you know, something that is going to capture, you know, people's attention and things of that nature. Will we be able to weigh in on that?
Uh yes, if you can, um should you adopt this resolution, we definitely will provide you some samples that you can pick up.
Okay, um just a few more questions. So I did read in the program the guidelines, but what is the criteria you all are using to terminate people that are not active in the program? And how, who would be monitoring that?
Right, uh that's gonna take some effort from, from the staff and we'll have to coordinate that with our support of Jacobs. Since they are installing our current signage on the roads, we will add some of that effort with them. And at this time, we have identified seven roads where we have uh done it in the past and we'll have pretty much the, we're in the process of getting the list of who requested back then. And some of them are sure they don't exist anymore, some, some of the signs will have to bring it down. Uh we, we will do all we can to get in touch with uh the per- the residents that requested to adopt the road back then.
Yeah, because one of the things that I have noticed in the previous program is that a lot of people are getting free advertisement and they're not actually following through with the program.
That's correct.
Um one other thing, is there a way that we can actually um put this information on the website where people can actually sign up to uh participate in the program? Those forms um that's in our packet, is there a way that we can put all that stuff online and kind of drive people to um to our website to participate in that program?
Uh, yes, ma'am. We will make sure that that's up there. I personally have received different calls and I was just waiting uh for the council to approve the resolutions on campus here.
And one last maybe suggestion, if we could partner with like maybe um Home Depot or Walmart and maybe they can supply us with uh pickers and vests um for the residents or for the people that are part of the program to actually, you know, offset any expenses that we would have to pay in reference to that. I've read and done some research and that has really worked in other um cities. So I don't know if we can kind of build a partnership with one of those organizations or markets to that, but.
Yes, we will, we'll, we'll refer them.
Well, anyway, thank you, um and like I said, I'm excited to see the program.
That's right.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Val.
The last, the last item is the council discussion on resolution adopting the compensation and classification study for the city of Fulton employees.
Good evening, I think uh for this item, uh just for the discussion point, I know that it was put on the agenda with no recommendation, which would allude to you just adopting it as is. And so we just wanted to give some context. Uh we provided earlier today uh in a letter via email. We will also hand you, let me get one copy, I'm sorry. Uh a hard copy, a hard copy that we're passing out uh as well. And just in general, uh we believe that the pay and compensation study uh is fair and appropriate and, and fairly comprehensive, although there are some things that we'll be bringing forth later that we might uh want you to consider. But in looking at the recent correspondence that we received from the city treasurer as well as uh the, uh some of the, the burden on the budget, uh I think our recommendation is a little bit more specific uh for your consideration. And it is simply uh, there are three kind of components that have financial impact. The first is bringing staff to uh fifteen dollars an hour, which is very minimal impact. Uh the next is uh to bring impacted employees up to the revised classification minimums that uh are listed. Uh it has a, a cost of about one point five million dollars, about one point six million dollars more than what it would have cost us uh last year. And uh the recommended raise of three percent for uh all staff members, uh which would add approximately another seven hundred thousand. And so with the recent information that we've lost about four million dollars from our tax digest due to uh Fulton industrial parcels not being included, our recommendation is to coordinate in three phases. There's a typo that I noticed in the letter, it's three phases. Uh phase one uh is to raise all of those uh salaries uh to the fifteen dollar minimum as well as the lowest level in the compensation study. Uh phase two would be uh to split the three percent increase over two years, which would be FY twenty twenty-one and FY twenty twenty-two. And so that way you would accept all of the recommendations in the study, but you would do it over a phased approach to be able to uh not allow a heavy burden on the uh, on the budget, the FY twenty budget. So that is the staff recommendation from the city manager's office and I would entertain any questions that you might have.
Okay, so uh move staff in a three percent raise of, I'm sorry. A little staff in a three percent raise over, you're saying bring them up to where they're supposed to be. I'm just keeping it a layman's term, bring them up to where they're supposed to be. We've already been reported that no one is making uh below fifteen dollars an hour at this time.
Well, not necessarily, it was a minor impact, there are some people who are, I included it in the letter. It's a cost of about twenty thousand dollars annually, it's folks who are very close, but it's not fifteen dollars an hour. So it's included in the uh, in the study and we received the uh, the overall cost, again, is twenty thousand dollars. So it's marginal, but there are some folks that want to make sure we bring them there. That's not the only recommendation, the other recommendation.
Yeah, I wasn't getting it, that was just the first part. I wanted, I wanted it, that would, uh, excuse me, I wasn't being rude, I'm just trying.
Understood, no problem.
Mr. uh Malaz, so at the last report, Mr. Russell, last council meeting reported that there were no employees making below fifteen dollars an hour. So what happened?
There will be no employees making fifteen dollars an hour for October one.
October one of this year?
Twenty nineteen, correct.
So there are currently employees now making fifteen dollars. So, there are currently employees now making fifteen dollars, making less than fifteen dollars an hour. I'm confused because what was reported to this council was that there were no employees making fifteen, below fifteen dollars an hour.
We have about eight employees that make fourteen forty-seven. So, fifty percent difference.
Okay, fourteen forty-seven?
Fourteen forty-seven an hour.
And this is about how many employees?
About eight.
Eight, okay, okay.
So, once you adopt to this one, there will be no one. And that would be made for this type of thing though.
Okay. All right, and then, the second part is what you were trying to tell me. You were recommending that we at least bring all employees up to where the paying wage compensation study...
Recommend, yes ma'am.
Okay, got you.
In this year.
Yes, I got you.
But I, I just want to be clear that we're recommending accepting everything proposed in the paying class, but we are, we are recommending to do it over a phased approach. The major portion this year and break the raises up at one point five over each.
Okay, I understand, so essentially, they will be getting something this year because they're gonna be brought up. And then, okay, so every year, they'll be getting something for the next three years?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
So, may I point out in the, what you are adopting now, it will be officially implemented through the twenty twenty budget. That will start in October one. And it should just be, but it shouldn't be you adopting the twenty twenty-one because you cannot adopt one year expenses in advance.
I, I don't think he's recommending that, I think he's recommending that we should just move forward with break, how we should do the three percent increase and he's recommending on how we should move forward. Yeah, it's something he had us recommending that we should adopt anything in advance.
That's correct, so it is simply letting you know what our plan for implementation would be. I think the concern that I had and why I wanted to make sure to put that on the record is because if you simply adopt it as is, that has budget implications because you would be doing it this year. So, it means you would be raising those eight employees to fifteen dollars an hour. You'd be taking on the increase at the lowest level of the new paying class plan and you would be providing three percent. And looking at the budget and looking at the losses that we have recently taken on, as well as increases that we plan to present for public safety, which would add on cars and guns and fire apparatus, et cetera, et cetera. It could put a burden on the operational side of business. And so, to make sure we reward our employees and show good faith, we implement as much of it as we can now and then phase the rest of it in. And if our financial position changes, I mean, you've seen the Georgia General Assembly have given us three new ways to collect revenue, then you could fast track it in year two, but...
Oh, I'm clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
I would like to see this in context of the budget that we're gonna be going forward. So that we can really, really look at it and I just want to see that detail.
Well, remember, we don't...
Because, because not only will we, will we be doing an increase, but I'm almost sure that there is going to be a request for additional people, additional whatever, whatever, whatever. So, I would just like to see the whole pattern.
So, I think that's why I'm making the recommendation. So, the timing of the study is, the recommendations are coming as we are formulating our budget and there appears to be a crunch on time. And so, the budget is not formulated, it's transmitted to the council on August second, but this item was brought forward to you now. And so, my goal in making this recommendation is to provide a safe space for you to implement without adding unintended consequences on the budget. Because literally, if you accept it as is, then you make those budget decisions without receiving the budget. Yes ma'am.
Yeah, I understand that, but still, I want to have this discussion.
Oh, understood, and I defer to the treasurer on that, yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Mr. Valbriano.
Yes, sir.
Victor, may I come to public safety? Are you saying that we're waiting a year? What are you saying?
No, no, not necessarily, so what I'm saying is the paying compensation, the pay and compensation study addresses the city holistically. And so, my recommendations are on that holistic response. We still have to present a budget to you that will include some of the other recommendations. And we're still doing the numbers, we have received the draft from finance, we're meeting with them next week to finalize. So, we've got some work to do, but there are a variety of things that we have to provide. We've talked about take home cards, I think that's been a big thing for the council for public safety, an increase, an educational stipend. And so, all of those things have to fit into our finite number of a little under a hundred and twenty million and so...
And I understand, I'm just concerned with the expectation of our employees moving the area of public safety.
Well, I think it's our goal to make sure that we take care of them. So, I think, one, i- if you look at this, you would be raising everyone from, I think our entry level is right around forty-five, I defer to the chief, because I think we raised it this year, but I think it takes them up in the paying compensation study to fifty-two. And so, yeah, okay.
Okay, next, oh, where we go, where we on, what was the next item?
That, that's, that is, that's the last item.
Listen Connie, let me ask you, we got an emergency that came, came up, we have a discussion off and it's a public discussion having to do with our retreat coming up on Thursday. Because there are a few things that we have to, excuse me, we have to design where he's gonna pass something out as a... As kind of a guideline, Mr. Colley and Mr. Becker. As to how we wanna do this thing, it's a two, is it a two day retreat, right?
A day and a half.
Day and a half. And talk to, talk to them, is it okay with everybody, we're having a discussion? Is it okay with everybody? Okay, talk to them about where we are and what's looking at so far.
The council's retreat will be at Chateau Lawn in Brazelton, Georgia. Check in on Thursday evening. And before you, you have a tentative agenda of things that you will do on Friday morning. The topic of discussion on Friday would be the strategic plan, FY twenty budget priorities update, and in the afternoon, the U R A plan and the park master plan. And then, on Saturday, you will talk about council expectations for census twenty twenty and the future of the municipal court. And those, with the exception of the U R A plan and the census, everything else was what you stated at the last, and the twenty twenty budget priorities were things that you talked about last meeting. The strategic plan, the court and the park plan.
And once again, this is just a draft, so I would entertain conversation of what you'd like to see on that day and a half. We could change some things around, we could move some things, yes.
Ma'am, I did want to comment on one thing. So, as I think the clerk and the mayor's office, the finance, everybody's done a great job in putting the agenda together. I just wanted to highlight that, you know, some folks were still trying to coordinate getting them there on such short notice. Now, I believe that the treasurer has identified a four day facilitator who will assist us with the strategic plan and other activities.
I have no idea.
Oh, I thought, no. Okay, well, so that's a challenge for us because our strategic planning vendor has another obligation with another city during that time. So, they will not be able to attend because, you know, the, the timing of our retreat. And so, we'll, I think the goal is and the reason the mayor asked to do it outside of a regular council meeting is to have a forum where we could get your documented feedback related to the plan. And so, you could do that through a variety of ways, but we need some guidance on that. So, normally what happens at this stage is you would receive them in writing or, you know, you would have some type of transmittal of edits. And so, we could do that and capture them as a part of the retreat. I believe council member Gil Yard sent us some today that have been transmitted to the vendor. But the way you would like to go about this, we need a little bit of guidance on so that we can continue scrambling to have somebody supporting your wishes.
Okay, Mr. Gil Yard? We only, in all of this time, which has been, I think a little over a year, we have only had one conversation, one-on-one with the vendor, only one. And that was our initial meeting with the vendor. The vendor did come to the sanitation meeting for about five minutes and just to let us know, here's what we've come up with. And that was it, but we have not had a discussion. We need to have a discussion with the vendor if we're going to really have a robust plan. So, we can, with the strategic planning vendor, we need to have that discussion. And so, so somehow, so we're paying him, so he needs to come to meet with us somewhere.
Well, so I, I think what you paid him, so you paid the company actually twice now because of a change order for additional work that you wanted. Oh, absolutely, I think it was about three thousand dollars. So, it's probably about a tenth of what the overall cost was, but absolutely. I think you wanted them to attend a couple of additional meetings, as well as wholesome additional public meetings that were not in the original contract. And so, they did that for a fairly nominal fee of, I think, for all of those additions, about three thousand dollars. But, and I, I'm certain we would have had to pay something additional for this area as well, but they're not available. And so, again, if, if you want one-on-one conversations, I, I was under the impression, based on the report out and some of the conversations we've had, that there have been some additional one-on-ones. If that's not the case, I mean, I think we can engage them, but we need some direction at this point. I, I have nothing further to contribute, I'm looking for guidance.
So, so we entered into a contract where the vendor to provide a service. It is not complete, some of us have questions about it, some don't. And it's, we've gone through all, all this time and then we get to the end and we have a lot, a big thick document that has a lot of draft words in it, that doesn't have a lot of stuff in it. And so, the vendor has been paid, I don't know what the vendor's been paid for, I don't know what the change order is for.
Oh, I could tell.
Mr. Malazi, make sure that that contract is on the list that I asked for of all the contracts. But, but seriously though, we need to have a sit-down, he needs to come and have a sit-down with us.
Okay, that's, that's fine, I...
He really does, just like the first sit-down.
I, I was not privy to those, so I'm not familiar, but what we'll do is, with your permission...
The first sit-down, you, you, you were the one that organized and had us sit down initially and I even had the first document in my purse. So, that was the first thing, so I don't want to stay on that.
Okay.
But the second thing is that one of our strategic priorities that came out of, out of our retreat last year was rate teams, which means that somewhere on this document, there needs to be some time for us to be with each other exactly like it was last year, with the team building part of what we did last year. Okay, let me get Ms. Willis and Mr. Becker at your hand in this regard.
Well, I'm recommending that since we're not gonna have the strategic planning company there between nine and twelve, we could scratch them and just plug in council engagement.
Are you looking to do the strategic planning?
I mean, if they can't come, if they're not there, what can we do about it? They're not gonna do this. So, I think we need to replace it, that's, I don't want to keep beating a dead horse. You said they're not coming, they're not coming, we can't do nothing about it. So, can we strike that and put, and have council, I'm calling it council engagement?
Well, to all intents and purposes, without further ado, the staff worked hard just to find a place within the short notice. And we finally found this place and then given those, those people opportunity to come in, we did, Mr. Colley. But they were just not enough time for them to get their, their business straight. So, we have to take into consideration that this was a, this was a pull together in spur of the moment.
And I wanna, I still have the call, but I also want to mention, he did come to the budget, the budget. So, to say he didn't spend time with us, he did not present, he did present to us at the budget meeting that we had in Peachtree City. He did present one and he did, and we, and we, and he asked for all questions and feedback there. So, if we don't get questions, if we don't get feedback, you know, I don't understand. But bottom line, he's not gonna be there on, on, on Friday. So, I'm asking that we replace that with council engagement.
So, is it a general consensus of everybody, if he's not there, there should be a party engagement? Do I get a general consensus?
Can I say something?
Can we, let's, if we have to hold, he wants to have the whole discussion first. So, let me go on and get, I get back to you.
Councilmember Baker and Ms. Colley.
Was it?
Councilmember Baker and Ms. Colley.
Yes, I'm saying, Mr. Colley, Mr. Baker, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Go ahead, you can get in.
It's, it's fine, go ahead.
I actually do agree with Councilwoman Willis, I, however, there is a facilitator that is, that is available. You, were you gonna talk about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I, I think first, so we can, I think we've identified a small list of facilitators. One, councilmember Colley referred to us really, I don't know, maybe a couple of months, a month ago, maybe.
It was a couple of months.
Couple of months ago. And, and there, there are others, we've had some folks facilitating our senior budget staff retreats as they have tried to make their budget cuts and enhancements or whatnot. But I, I, again, I think we, we kind of need some, some guidance here. And I'm sorry to keep beating that when it comes to the strategic plan. So, we had, but we, we need to, if we're going to incur additional costs or set it up or scrap it or what, I, I'm not clear on the direction of the council. So, we have a document that's, I don't know, fifty pages, probably double that when you lay it out. And there are some enhancements that you want. And so, most times when you have a document that we'll call a final draft or a workable draft, you provide your edits, your enhancements, your removals, et cetera. Those items, him meeting with everyone one-on-one, if that's what you want, we can do that. But I'm still trying to get us to a point of what is the council as a whole seeking to finalize this document? Where are the deficiencies, what needs to be added? We need that type of guidance or we will continue to have change orders without knowing what the goal is. And I think that's the direction that we're looking for.
So, my, my first part is I want to honor what you're saying. Do you feel like this strategic plan or the direction that you, these, these directions that you need, do they somehow affect these other topics or our budget?
No, I think they're separate. I, I, I think, I think they're separate and I say it for this reason. You have, you've given budget priorities, you have a paying class study that's kind of detailed on personnel and some of those directions, and you have a framework of a strategic plan that you created this time last year. And so, I believe that if the finalization of the strategic plan is something that you want to make separate, I think we can do that, but again, we still need that, that goal.
So, I, I'm, I'm just off of this up for conversation. If it's not exigent, if it's not critical to the rest of the retreat and the person who's been doing it isn't there, isn't going to be available to do it, maybe we should wait until that person is there. I do think, I do think that we should have some kind of conversation about our strategic vision for the city. What, maybe we use that as a basis, maybe that's... What, maybe we use that as a basis, maybe that's, maybe we start the conversation and finish it when that person is available again. But I, I would like to see that. I would like to, I would like to see that at the end of the day. Uh, I do want us, at the end of the day on Friday, after our, after our facilitator has had, um, time to observe, I do want to, uh, make a little plug for this guy, Dr. Hooker, who I met through, um, some other work that I was doing. He, he is a graduate of Morehouse, Mr. Mayor. He has his BS from Morehouse. He has an MPA and an MPH, uh, from the University of Massachusetts. He has a JD from Emory University and a PhD from a school in the Netherlands. He specializes in conflict resolution and peace building. So he has gone to work with governments that have been in conflict around the world. Like that is what he does. And so I think that, that it would be, one of the things that, that he has talked about is observing us before he facilitates a discussion. And I think that that could be very helpful. And so if there, if we're missing a facilitator, that would be my.
Well, let me go, let me ask you, let me ask just to get, your, your suggestion is we have this discussion anyway as it attains the strategic plan, but put it at the end of day on Friday.
Yes.
And that this young, this guy comes in and be a facilitator for the whole, or just for that issue?
For the council engagement?
And then, yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm saying, I'm going to ask you a question. Because what is the cost, because we got to consider the cost too. Uh, if you're going to bring in a facilitator, he's not coming for free. And, uh, we, we're pretty expensive as it is. So that's, that's my question. You have, does he have a cost, Mr. Cleve, that you made up?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Don, that's, that's outside of the money that we've already paid?
Yes, but any facilitator that we're going, whoever facilitates, we're going to have to pay for it.
I'm, I'm not, Mr. Cleve, now you're ordering the money, bro. So it's just a matter, I don't mind the facilitator, just wondering if we can be with pay.
Well, I mean, I, I believe we should, we're working together with finance and the clerk's office. We're going to make sure you have an excellent and productive retreat and so whatever we have to do to do that.
Okay, so this is a guy. Are you, is everybody okay with having Mr. Cleve's recommendation, uh, to come in as a facilitator? Let me ask that first.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
We probably need a facilitator.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Okay, tell us the resume, Mr. Cleve, but right now it looks like everybody's saying okay. All right? All right? Let me say one other thing. So we, let's get this out the way, the strategic plan will be a conversation that we'll have at the end of the day on Friday. Is that right?
That's why I got to come.
Okay, go ahead.
So what I really think, Mr. O'Donnell has said this over and over again. He said, I'm looking for direction from the council. The council needs to have a discussion about the strategic plan.
That's what we're doing.
And that's what we have not, that's what, what I'm saying, us, we need to have that discussion about that strategic plan so that we can get from point A to point B. Now, maybe at the end of the day, and we can do that, when we're, I think that we would maybe have an hour with each other just to talk about some things that we need to talk about. And maybe we can take a half an hour and talk about the strategic plan. And then, uh, Cleve's, Mr. Whatever his name is, can come in and, and do the rest of it. But we have got to have a discussion about the strategic plan. He's looking for guidance that we're not getting.
But I think, see, I think Mr. Cleve said, let's have the strategic plan put at the end of the day on Friday and let's move forward. Yeah, he said, he said that. Okay, so we're getting there. Now there's a discussion as to, would you call it the council engagement?
Well, I think what, what Cleve said is have the facilitator oversee, oversee that. He, he agreed that we need to have council engagement and that's the discussion to talk about some things we need to talk about. But you're saying have a facilitator.
To do the community.
To do the, to, to oversee that?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's what he's saying.
Okay, so it's a little different what I said. Uh, we talked about the overall facilitation, now we just talking about the, uh, council engagement part?
Well, no, no, I, I think she's, so it sounds like Councilwoman Gilliard wants to talk about the strategic plan.
Right.
And Councilwoman Willis wants to talk about something else.
I want to talk about both. I want to talk about the engagement and the plan.
All I'm saying is that whatever we talk about, I think we need a facilitator.
Okay, so, so what I'm saying to you is your facilitator would be for the overall day?
Yes.
Or all of a sudden?
Now he can talk about strategic plans.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Uh, well, how, how much time, we talk about enhancement, how much time do we talk about?
The, the, the strategic plan discussion is not, I was saying, that's going to take, for us to talk about some of the things, I'll call it some of the things that we need to talk about, council engagement, Ms. Gilliard. I mean, Councilwoman Gilliard. So I, I think that's appropriate between nine and twelve. And, and then the strategic plan, we're moving to the end. Yeah, moving to the end.
Okay.
Really, no, I'm saying them different, I think, I, 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 I think that, so, so this guy specializes in conflict resolution.
Between nine and twelve.
So the first thing that he needs to do is observe our group. And so I think that we should flip the,
Well, why don't you do this?
The budget priorities with the strategic plan, so from nine to tw- whatever we're talking about before, from ten to twelve, we should talk about at first.
So, Mr. Cleve, what about this? If he wants to observe us, you're right. Why don't we swap out the council's, take the census to put it up on Friday and make him do that on, uh, on Thursday, on Friday, make him do it on Saturday? He had an ability to go through the whole day with us. Follow what I'm saying?
On Saturday.
Yeah. I mean, if, if you're thinking he wants to observe us, Mr. Cleve, that's what I'm saying. He have a whole day to observe us and then he can come back. And where we have, we'll, we'll just take the council expectation on census and put it up on the Friday and then bring the, uh, council engagement to, uh, Saturday at nine o'clock.
All, all I would say about that is if, if, if we do it that way, we're paying for it for two days. If we, if he does it at the end of the day on Friday, we're paying for one day.
Okay.
That's a two-day, is it two-day?
I mean, if you want to pay for him for two days.
I mean, I don't want, I mean, I just.
I would just, I mean, I, I just, I think all of these topics, I think, no, no disrespect, I think the census is kind of a different thing. Um, I think, I think our URA plans, I think our URA plans, our budget priorities, our Parks Master Plans, those are all kind of related around money. And so, I mean, that's what people fight about, is money.
Okay, so I have a recommendation, Mr. Mayor. Do you mind?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I would recommend that, um, we take, okay, so it's at ten thirty to twelve. How long is that? That's, uh, eleven, that's an hour and a half. Okay, why don't we do from nine to ten, from nine to eleven, the, uh, budget party update? And then, then have the, uh, council engagement. Because I think what Mr., what Cleve is saying is he wants us to have some type of interaction for the facilitator to observe us before we go into the council engagement discussion.
So we got more time on, uh, sanitizer?
But then he, that's two days. He's saying we need.
If he only comes on Saturday.
Oh.
So we start from eight to, uh, the, it's eight to twelve, if we have nothing but then.
On Saturday, that's what I'm saying.
That's what we need to say.
No, I, I.
You don't like that?
I, I think that, I think that he needs to come, we're in this public space. I think he needs to come and see the things that we debate about.
Fight.
Yes, that we, that we debate, whatever, whatever, whatever we're going to put on it up here. And, and that's the budget, that's the URA?
That's the strategic.
And I'm trying to.
That's the strategic plan.
Like those are the things, yeah. I just think, that's what I was saying.
Yeah.
Let him see all of that.
Yeah.
And then, uh, come back and let's have the retreat, I mean, the enhancement.
Okay.
Depending on how much you charge us, right?
Well, we all, y'all already say you have it for the retreat, so it's two-day retreat.
You charge us twelve fifty, yeah?
How much?
Twelve fifty a day.
Twelve thousand, twelve fifty.
Twenty thousand, yeah.
I'll do it. I'll be the facilitator.
I know you would. Uh, roughly, did that?
We never know or have concerns about what we paid each other.
I, I'm not making an issue of, I'm just saying.
An issue of that one?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do you know if he's available?
Yes, okay.
He's been waiting on a call. He's available.
But, but Cleve suggested that we do it one day. He don't want to come back then.
No, I'm not. You are, this is right.
So we.
You're trying to see the whole, the whole thing in one day? Is that what she's saying you're saying?
So who's going?
I'm just saying that, that he, I'm just saying that I think he will be better in the afternoon than in the morning.
And he suggested that he comes one day, which is Friday.
Okay, this time.
You'll see enough between eight o'clock until?
So, so between three thirty, between three thirty and five, what we can do is move the Parks Master Plan up. And between three thirty-five, we can do this.
That's right. Everybody all right with that?
Yeah, but I think it should be three or five, three to five.
Okay. Is everybody all right with five? Can I get consensus, everybody?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Just move everything up.
Are you getting this, Ms. Baker?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other changes you think with these materials? Here, none?
Question. So he's only going to be there for?
Yes.
So there's not going to be any facilitators at all in the center? We just going to? Like, because we can, yeah.
That's what I heard.
Okay, the future, who's facilitating the future of the municipal court? We might need to have.
Just Gassen would be there.
But they, I guess.
She's not a administrator. She's not, she's not a conversation. You might need to have him for two days.
I, 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 I would like to just say something.
Go right ahead.
When we were setting up with this date, of course, this was the date that I publicly said I, I wouldn't be able to make it. I don't want to be up till. Um, if you're going to stretch it and you want him to actually have all of us, I mean, I was, I hope push was to get back before that day, Saturday. And if that was the case, I could be a part of at least a part that allows us to come together as a collective.
Okay.
So, I mean, I don't know if you took a vote for, struck how we just did that, but my vote will be named, my vote will be for us to have for two days and for him to be there on Saturday. And, you know, this is the question, we've never had a conversation. I have no idea that we've been to several retreats, how much we pay these individuals. And Cleve just ran off an extensive resume of a gentleman who seems well-qualified. And I just think that we should push back when we always had a facilitator for every day that we've had.
Okay.
Well, if, if it's over a certain amount, are we supposed to go that far?
Yeah.
Yeah, but twelve hundred dollars is never, is not that enough.
Go ahead, Mr.
But three thousand is.
Three thousand.
I think that portion of it, staff can coordinate and come back with something that's important.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Baker's suggestion is.
To have him for two days?
Have, have the facilitators for two days. Can we get that?
And have, and have council, whatever, uh, Councilwoman Willis is, uh, suggesting for council coming together and that conversation be held off until Saturday.
Okay, so I want to make sure I'm not doing nothing illegal. Attorney Walker, what amount are we supposed to get three quotes, or is it, is it Mr. Kerr? What amount are we supposed to get three quotes for?
About twenty-five hundred.
What I'm saying is, is that this is really in the weeds for us. I think we can coordinate. You got a last-minute activity, you got a variety of different things. Instead of talking about procurement action that has not occurred in a public space, I would ask humbly if you allow us to coordinate on your behalf and follow up quickly. That's what I would ask.
All right. So, uh, Madam Kirk, as we close this out, if you read back the agenda as we talk about it up here.
On Thursday, you will talk about, on Friday, I'm sorry, the FY twenty budget part, Friday morning, the FY twenty budget priorities update. Move the URA up to the morning session. In the afternoon, you will talk about the master plan and the strategic plan. Am I right so far?
Yeah, go ahead.
And then on Saturday. I'm sorry?
The council engagement, what you have headed?
Saturday.
Okay, say, go ahead. Go ahead.
Council engagement is Saturday and in the future of the municipal court. Do you want to do the future of the municipal court first and have a council engagement last?
That'd be fine.
That's what I have.
Okay, so are we, are we, have we had consensus?
Oh, and the census, uh, I'll put it on Friday.
Okay. Do I have consensus to that right now?
It just, it just, and one, the Parks Master Plan is the first thing on Friday?
Budget priorities.
Okay. The preference that we can will be the master plan because I have, um, an associate who's actually preparing the URA plan coming up. And I'm not positive he can be there before noon. I'll try my hardest to get him to make any scheduled accommodations, but I do know that after noon, he's available.
Okay, Ms. Gibbs?
Yeah, quick question. Um, so are we going to end on Saturday at noon or one thirty?
It's at one thirty, one thirty, two o'clock is ending time.
So we'll be done by two o'clock at Saturday?
Should be, yes.
Should.
I, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
So I, I, I guess I'm confused of Ms. Attorney Walker, why is your associate doing the URA? I thought that's something that we would have to, have we decided we were going with your firm for that?
So normally with a URA plan, you would do that administratively. Um, well, you don't have to do it administratively, but it's something that can be done administratively with coaching, um, by the legal department or with collaboration by the legal department. My understanding, um, I spoke the day that you guys adopted the URA, I spoke with the city manager and there were substantial staff expectations, including preparation of, of the strategic plan during the same time so that we could have the URA plan done in a time to advertise it and have it adopted for your August thirteenth meeting. I agreed to facilitate and find someone to put the plan in place. So far, the plan has been mirrored, um, off the email that I sent you guys where I had several plans that were example plans, that were models that were used, uh, by the state of Georgia just to give representation of what sample plans are. So far, we mirrored those with the exception that we have added the budget priorities that you've provided at your first budget meeting in addition to the budget priority information that's been provided by Mr. Malazi this week. Um, because we want this to be specifically tailored to the council more than an outside consultant, I have asked him to come to provide you with an analysis or a layout.
Is it free?
Is it free? No, he is not doing this for free.
Oh.
I, I mean, you write that before council, I, 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 nevermind, I'll be for it too.
Yes, that's it.
Okay, now, let's just take a, take a minute, break these sessions.
Uh, are we, do we need to, I, uh, move that we're going to execute a session for personnel litigation and real estate?
Second.